You can say it to me. Come on, man. All right. Welcome back. We're back from recess and from recess and reconvene this the budget meeting. And this piece of the public hearing is an overview.
You go for introductions, Commissioner?
Introductions again, okay, let's do that. I just, we didn't last time. John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah, County Manager Romero Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Commissioner-elect Carolina Mejia, and Clerk of the Board Amy Davis, present, and Commissioner Gary Edwards is not here. And so with that, we're going to have hear an overview and then take public comment, overview of the budget. And this will be just a tiny bit different since we don't have directors and electeds here to answer questions. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. So with that, Robin.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So I am going to make sure I'm sharing the right screen. And get your picture out of there. So this evening, I'll provide a very high level overview of the budget. I could talk about the budget hours, but you really don't want me to. Even though I've got like 58 slides here, we will not be looking at all of them. So I'll provide very high overview. Give you the opportunity to open it to public comments and then we will recess till tomorrow. So all of these are things that you have already seen. There, there's nothing new in these slides, which is part of why I think I can walk through them very quickly. Here is the revenue picture comparing 2020 to 21. This year, we anticipate by the time we close the year that we will have collected $361.9 million. And next year, we anticipate $324.5 million. So what, what's going on? Taxes are going up, charges for goods and services are going up. It's these intergovernmental revenue that is taking a huge drop. And other financing sources, we are not planning on issuing debt. And then quite a few others, but the really big story is right here in the intergovernmental revenue, and that is the coronavirus funding. The county brought in about $30 million this year to support the coronavirus response that we will not have available to us next year, and that is a huge hit. Our expenditures, this is broken down by sector. When you look at all funds, law and justice is 28%. Economic vitality is 25%. That includes transportation, Health and Human Services at 17%. And the other three sectors make up the balance. Expenditures is the same kind of story as you just saw on revenue. 368.1 million this year. 333.4 million next year. And that big drop comes in mainly Health and Human Services and Legislative, those are the, and some internal services. That is where we spent the bulk of the coronavirus response money. You also see a drop here in economic vitality. But the, the big, once again, the big story is spending is going to go down a lot. And it's because of the coronavirus funds. Now, I, I, I think in the future, this is going to be an interesting bit of research. Someone's going to be looking back in time at trends, financial trends in Thurston County, and really across the nation and say, what happened in 2022? And hopefully, you know, in the near term, people will remember. But in long range, people are going to wonder what caused our expenditures to go up and then drop down so extreme? We're going to have to make careful notes in all of our records. Capital budget is not quite as extremely different. 47 million this year, the budget is 43.7 million next year. There are less anticipated projects, basically, that we're going to be doing. And the capital expenditures, we had anticipated 52 million this year. A big chunk of that was initial spending because we were quite optimistic on having a levy pass for a courthouse. That money is taken out, so you see a big drop for the projects next year, only 38 million. That is not to say that you will not be doing work on these buildings and considering the needs for facilities for the county. That is just the anticipated spending in the coming year is less. Revenue in the general fund, huge percent, 68% is from taxes. That's why we spend so much time talking about those two main sources of property tax and sales tax. Those are anticipated to go up. It's that intergovernmental revenue that's going down. Coronavirus relief, that's, it's a broken record. And ours is not the only county. It's the same story everywhere. And then because property taxes is such a huge amount of the revenue in the county, we like to show this breakdown. So people know that a very small portion of their property taxes supports county government. The vast majority goes to the state and supports local schools. Then it goes to cities and towns, fire districts, other types of districts, like the library in the cemetery district. Only 16.3 cents on the dollar comes to the county. And of that, less than 10 cents on the dollar goes to the general fund. So really, property taxes only about 16% of what you pay supports county government. These are the operating expenditures in the general fund. Again, law and justice, when you look only at the general fund, is the biggest share, 74%. You may recall that, excuse me, that we looked at 2020 and the share was down around, I don't know, it seemed like it was around 65%. I'd have to look again. But the big drop is because we put so much of the coronavirus relief money into general government and legislative. So it looked like law and justice got smaller. In reality, it was just that the pie got so much bigger and the money was funneled in to the legislative. And you see this huge drop on the table from 19 million to 8 million in the legislative. And general government only went down a little. But law and justice goes up actually from approximately $80 million to almost 82 million. Here's the budgeted expenditures is this dark blue line. And then you see the actual expenditures on the bar. And what you see is that we always spend a little bit less than what you appropriate. We have to do that. We cannot spend more than the appropriation. So you want to see something less than the appropriated budgeted amount. The big question is how much less? And this gap usually runs roughly 3%. Here's the expenditures compared to the revenue. This is where it's a little different because you can spend more than you bring in. And the county usually budgets expenditures higher than revenue. But in most years, the revenue that actually comes in the door is more than the amount that's spent. And this, going back to this chart, this gap has something to do with that. We also estimate revenues in the forecast somewhat conservatively. That's a best practice in budgeting. So in most years, you see the odd year, 2017, we actually spent more than we received. 2013, even going back to the recession years, the actual expenditures were just at or below the actual revenue. Here's the general fund workforce table. The print on that is pretty small, I apologize for that. But what you see at the end of the day is that if we compare to just before the recession, there were 571 general fund employees. Now, in 2021, the proposed budget includes 652 FTEs. There's a lot going on in these years. This peach color highlighting indicates that the FTEs went down because we went to a new budgeting method of what we're calling direct appropriation. These were not a reduction in FTE, they are just funded in a different way. So that's something to know about this table. Looking at general fund workforce growth compared to county population, you see that overall, we are growing in the general fund, the number of FTEs fairly consistent, if not somewhat faster, than the population growth. And again, it dips down here because of that change in budget method, direct appropriation. And here you see total county workforce is growing just about on the same rate, growth rate as the population. Here are the highlights in your budget. One of the big things that the board has proposed in this preliminary budget is 1.5% cost of living increase for all county employees. You're also taking action to begin to reduce the levy shift out of the road fund to the general fund. Out of the, I think, $4.5 million is what we did in levy shift and road diversion combined this year. And next year, that goes down by 250,000. It doesn't feel like a big percentage, but it's a start. In the economic vitality area, you have increased authority for land purchases to align with and support the habitat conservation plan. There's money in the general fund to support the building development center and code compliance. You have funds for studies to inform future decision-making. There are three positions that are added to public works. And there's an increase in rates and charges for the Long Lake and the Lake Lawrence Lake Management Districts. In the law and justice sector of county government, even in a conservative budget, the board was able to do quite a bit. There's funding for an off-site courtroom, and that's going to be about $1 million a year. And that is what enables the county to continue access to justice for our citizens in a manner that is appropriate in light of a pandemic. You've added funding for a Superior Court justice, if the legislature should approve payment of that. Because recall that we share the cost with the state. There is funding for scanning records for preservation of our documents in the clerk's office. And you've approved a CT scanner for the coroner that will, in the long run, actually make money for the county. It will pay for itself. You've added IT staff to support district court. You heard about that earlier today. That's to support a modern court, you need that IT support. There are four positions added to pre-trial services to expand diversion and to support district court. There are three deputies in the sheriff's office, two road deputy, one school resource officer. There are positions that are made permanent in the prosecutor's office. Four deputies are added in corrections. And there's a social worker position in public defense. So quite a bit of funding to support continued needs in law and justice. In general government, there's a new property control analyst added to the assessor's office. There's a cybersecurity position added in the auditor's office. And while that is added for the auditor and will secure our election security, that will also be a benefit countywide. Two new positions are funded in the auditor's office to continue our historical document imaging project. You've added a criminal justice manager. There is a placeholder for your consideration next year to add a criminal justice sales tax to the ballot for consideration by the voters. There's funding for the Thurston climate mitigation plan. And we have earmarked a limited amount of money for continuing to respond to the coronavirus. We hope it'll get us through to a time when either the federal government or the state will provide the additional funding that we know that we're going to need. You've provided funding to restart the replacement project for our ERP system that supports financing human resources. There's money to replace the county's permit system. And you've authorized the issue of a general obligation bond, which we will not do without your explicit authority to fund major IT system replacements. In Health and Human Services, you'll hear more about this tomorrow. There is funding for disease investigators in public health. There's funding for the LEAD program. It's a law enforcement assisted diversion program. There's additional funding for a family intervention health nurse. There's a temporary food inspector that will help us catch up on the backlog that's been created by the coronavirus. There's environmental health program manager and a communications coordinator. There's a placeholder for a emergency services medic one measure to go onto the ballot for funding medic one, that's for consideration by the voters. And you've adjusted revenue and expenditures in emergency services to ensure a healthy fund balance. The big challenges before you, you know, this word keeps coming back throughout everything we've talked about all year long. It's the coronavirus. That is the major challenge coming up. And as you've heard Romero say, the funding ends, the CRF funding ends now in November. We have a little bit that we could extend to December. We have some funding from the state that'll take us through March. But the virus isn't going away. So the impact on the budget and the uncertainty that it causes is the number one challenge going into 2021. And then, as you see in every year, the cost of doing business in the county increases at a faster rate than our revenues do. So that's my overview this evening. Tomorrow evening, we'll talk a little more about the, the economy in general. But that is my overview tonight. And so Commissioner, I'm going to turn it back to you to open the hearing for public comment.
Thank you, Robin. Very comprehensive and intense. And you're right, we will not return to any type of state or normalcy until the infection rate decreases. And I think we're far from seeing that at this point in time. So with that overview, we're now opened up for public comment. And I have one person that signed up this year, that's John Pettit. You got three minutes on the clock. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and future Commissioner Ms. Mejia. As you've gotten to know, I'm one of these people that I am usually factually correct on all the information I provide, and I'm very specific. I like to think of myself as being somebody who is a government overwatch. So I expect a lot. I'm going to just mention this because I happen to know that Ms. Campbell's also the central services director. And I'm really not sure, but you know, when my kid had too many toys, he'd leave them laying around and then pretty soon I'd just pick them up. Well, I've seen this car parked down in the 15-minute zone since the election night. Right in front of the door, it's a small Prius. That's a county, piece of county inventory. Apparently, you might have more cars than what you need. You have hundreds of cars in inventory. But to have one parked in the 15-minute zone for well over a month is a little unacceptable. It needs to be picked up and put away. A couple of major things I want to note here in this comment section. There is no balanced budget this year. I know there's not a balanced budget. You're thinking, well, there's a balanced budget. No, it's not a balanced budget when we're moving money, what's $4,250,000 out of the roads fund, which is a separate tax for taking care of the roads in unincorporated Thurston County, over into the general fund. When that goes away, then you're going to be truly looking at a balanced budget. You have a veterans fund that, at the end of this coming year, you will have more money in that account built up than two years of expenses. The veterans fund tax level should have been reduced by law. It should have been reduced to compensate, to reduce that level so you don't build up a 800,000 in an account that uses 300,000 a year. So that tax rate's too high. The fact that I still was looking for some numbers related to the actual amount of maintenance that we would be having on these three buildings this year. The fact that we haven't actually established there's going to be any major issues of correction of anything on these buildings, including cleaning the roof. I'm looking forward to getting some response on those things because they are major issues. If you don't take care of your, your things, pretty soon, there's nothing to take care of. And we got to take care of it because it costs a lot of money. And I think that we have to be careful. I'm looking forward to when Ms. Mejia comes in. Perhaps we'll have meetings that'll be moved to an evening time so more public can attend. It's a sad situation when I'm the only one. And I'll wrap up with just, just saying that I, I look forward to some more budget hearing tomorrow to talk about things. I still disagree with the fact that it really wasn't advertised properly. I'll see you tomorrow.
Is there anybody on Zoom?
I don't have anybody on Zoom, Commissioner.
Hey, anybody on conference call?
Yeah, let me check.
Shut up, thank you.
Commissioner, while Romero checks for someone on the phone, you may want to offer our new Commissioner-elect an opportunity.
Okay. For those members of the public who have joined us this evening, if you'd like to provide public testimony related to the overall proposed 2021 budget, please, I mean yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county, and you have three minutes. No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion, Robin. I was going to do that regardless. So thank you. Commissioner-elect Mejia, any questions or comments?
I do not. I'm just thankful to be part of the process and to learn. Thank you, Robin.
And I, the stand-up that you were here the entire day, 1:30 for the entire public hearing. I don't know if you'll make it tomorrow, but we'll see tomorrow. So with that, Commissioner Mensah.
Nothing. Be back tomorrow.
County manager?
Nope, no, sir, thank you.
Okay. Any final thoughts before we take recess until tomorrow afternoon, December 8th at 1:30?
Just many thanks to everyone who's been involved. And thank you to the board for sitting through another, another fun day of budget.
It never stops the fun. So we are in recess until tomorrow, December 8th, Tuesday at 1:00. So we are in recess until tomorrow, December 8th, Tuesday at 1:30 in the afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.